Go ahead and start our meeting. I want to thank everybody for coming out. If you would, stand for the invitation pledge, please.
Our gracious heavenly Father, I want to thank you, Lord, for the many blessings of life. Thank you for allowing us to gather out early in this new year. Please be with this commission board to make the right decisions for the people of Pickens County. Be with our nation, our nation's soldiers, our nation's leaders, Lord. In all these many favors and things we ask in our son's name, our Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its government, which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is reading and approval of the previous meeting's minutes.
Do you have the motion that they be accepted as written?
I have a move. We hear a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting last meeting's minutes, please raise your hand. Any opposed? United decision. The third item is old business. We have none from the last meeting. The fourth item is new business. We have four items under new business tonight. The first one is a rezon request and I want to announce we have an open public hearing on this rezon request. I'd like to ask Richard what the county's opinion is, please.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Per state and local advertisement and notice requirements, all have been met for this case as well as the other items on our agenda. And so I'll ask that in the minutes, you know, I don't have to say the same thing four times that it just be reflected for each item. Paul Branton submitted an application to rezone about six acres property in northeast Pickens, 131 Tocking Rock Falls. Currently, the property is zone residential RR and the family who lives there proposes to rezone the property to small agriculture SA. If approved, the intent is to have a small farm. The owner occupiers of the property still intend to live at the house. They just intend to use the land to a fuller extent for a small goat farm and have some laying hens and have a small garden. For the land use intensity ordinance, in other words, chapter 67 of our county code ordinances, I looked at the criteria for rezoning and a couple of it stood out. The proposal for rezoning may not result in a use causing an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets and utilities. And in terms of the comprehensive plan, the area is identified for rural development and the rezoning is consistent. I'll ask, and I'll ask that the same thing be for all items. I'll ask that the staff report be included in the minutes and staff recommends approval in this case.
Thank you. Is Mr. Blanton here?
Mr. Branton isn't here, but I'm Paul Branton.
Okay.
And I do own the property.
Is there anything that you would like to add or state?
Well, just for...
Please, please, say it in the...
Okay, sir.
That's okay.
We just wanted to, as he stated, use the property for a sustainable farm and the goats that we plan on breeding and selling there are Nigerian dwarf goats. And some of the neighbors had, you know, concerns about the size of the goats. But these are smaller goats, they're about the size of a medium dog. And we'll have very few of those. It's not like we're gonna have hundreds of goats. We plan to breed them and then sell them. They can be sold for pets, for forage clubs, there's, you know, many different good reasons to do that. And we plan to have our farm at the top of our property. There's wooded ruffers, you know, where you won't even see it from the road and we don't even think the neighbors will know they're there. The only time that we'll have visitors to the farm would be interested buyers who want to come and see the farm where the goats are raised. So there wouldn't be any distress over utilities or roads. Of course, we'll answer any questions that you might have.
How many, about how many goats approximately?
We plan on starting out with three does and one buck. And they have, you know, we need to herd from two to five kits.
Right.
And then, of course, we're planning to sell those. People buy them for pets. They're excellent milk goats. Their milk has butter fat. We plan on making so and having a small farm and selling vegetables at the farmer's market. And we plan on doing this during our retirement years because we're all retired now, so we want to use our property for, you know, additional income.
Any other questions for Ms. Blanton?
No, but I thoroughly enjoyed reading what you wrote about the little goats.
I think I went a little overboard, but I think first time we have done it, it's good, thank you.
I would like to see little babies, so type of...
They're, yeah, they can be trained. They can be trained to walk on a leash, sleep in bed, so they're very smart animals.
What's the value of a small goat like that? If you're gonna, if you're gonna raise them and sell them, what do they go for?
Anywhere from around 450 to 650 per goat.
Wow.
They have excellent milk quality. Their soap is, is really good for children and to make cheese, of course, for ourselves.
For a friend.
You can get about two quarts a day from a, from a small Nigerian dwarf goat.
Any other question for Ms. Blanton? We had one citizen that would like to speak, Mrs. Sharon Davenport. We had...
I don't have a problem with it. We've never even met, well, just a few minutes ago. So, you know, I was wondering about property value. Would it change that or taxes? Does it change the taxes?
Can you speak to that, Richard? Can you give number about that than we could here?
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate your time. The first question about property values, as somebody who's not a real estate professional and not a marketing professional, I don't speculate on the change potentially in the value of the Blanton property or any neighbor property. The, the difference between residential zoning and small agriculture or just agriculture in general zoning is in residential zoning, somebody can have goats, hens, they can have non-pets, but residential zoning is primarily intended to be residential only, not business, not commercial enterprise. And what's proposed anyway is the owner occupiers to still live in the house, use the house, have a residential property, but have the ability to also get a county business license as a small farm.
Okay. We've, we've lived there for 30 years and we've had, on the other side of us, we've had numerous problems with those people, with animals and stuff. And they had goats, sheep, now he's got pigs. So I'm like, you know, that's what, about two acres, can, does that have to be rezoned for them to have all those hogs on there?
No, ma'am. For residential zoning, the county does allow for up to 15 non-pets. And then depending on the type of livestock, there is a certain percentage, you know, number per acre. And occasionally, maybe once a year, we do get a call. I'll give you an example. Last year, we got a call in the Riverstone subdivision where, you know, some folks said, you know, this seems like a, you know, a good number of animals. Can you come take a look? And we went and took a look and similar to this property, it was a fairly long driveway, a house, and then behind the house, we couldn't see it from the road, but behind the house there were animals there and they were within a fence. And there were, you know, approximately a dozen non-pets. And so based on the fact that the county marshal and I, you know, couldn't count, you know, easily count, you know, 20 or 30 animals which would exceed that number of 15 in residential, then we did not find that the concern was warranted for code violation. Now, now, you know, sometimes I do recognize that, that animals may be a concern. We do have one right now where somebody has basically turned their entire property into a, you know, into a, into a chicken yard, a breeding ground for chickens. And we do have requirements, structures have to be at least 100 feet from all property lines. And then, like I, like I talked about with the number 15, if it's, you know, easily verifiable, documented that, yeah, somebody's got a breeding ground of 30 or 50, then that would not be allowed.
Yeah, I just know that, you know, with the hogs being there, that we are beat up with flies in the summertime, which is not, you know, I don't like that. So I'm just, you know, concerned about, you know, everybody doing it and especially how many animals per acre are you supposed to have? Is it 15?
I'll be glad to get with you. I've got my code book here. So we can go over the individual animals, but the total number is 15 per residential property of non-pets. Again, you know, that does not include dogs and cats.
Okay. That's, that's all I've got to say.
Any other questions for Ms. Blanton? If not, I make a motion to approve the application as presented.
A second.
I move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposition? No opposition. This hearing is closed. Takes us to the next hearing. With Mr. Terry West announcing that this, this hearing is open. Richard, what's the county recommendation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. So this is about five acres and this is off Lower Dowdham Hill Road, off 515. You turn to the south off Lower Dowdham Hill Road, south on Fairview. And then you've got an intersection of Fairview and a very small road, Cardinal. And there were actually Cardinals out there when I turned on the Cardinal Road, so, you know, it was beautiful. The, the property itself is currently zone commercial, possibly because it backs up to 515, but it is unusual. It's surrounded by residential and agriculture land and zoning. And so the proposal is for rezoning to small agriculture for the family to, to build a small house for themselves and then have some possible small agriculture uses. So in terms of the criteria to consider for rezoning per the county code, the rezoning to small ag may be suitable in light of the, the rural and, you know, combination of residential and agriculture in the Fairview area. The proposal may not result in an excessive or burdensome use of the existing streets and utilities. For the comprehensive plan, because it's adjacent, backing up to 515, but no road frontage, it's still within that swath of land identified as suburban infill. And so residential and commercial is included in the comp plan, but for this particular property, the proposal includes building a new house, having it being, you know, owner occupied by these folks, and then having the potential for, for small agriculture uses. So I didn't think it was that unusual for this particular area, and so I recommend approval.
Mr. West?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
I bought this property from, I call him my uncle. I've gone to church with him my whole life and they've owned this property for 70-ish some years. Their parents passed away, it passed down to them. I bought it from them. I'm just looking to build about 22, 2300 square feet. My wife isn't for me. We have to have maybe two to three goats.
I have a contract.
Yeah, we have a contract. But that's just our simple plans. I like the area, easy access, so forth.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. West? Or Mrs. West?
Yeah, I just got one question. In your letter, you mentioned changing it to residential.
Mm-hmm.
And that's kind of referred to a couple of times, but the recommendation is actually small agriculture. So I'm kind of wondering, if you're not looking to do a lot of agritourism for a large number of animals.
No, very few.
What's the distinction there? Which one would really better fit that overall plan being that it does border 515? Did that come into the thinking?
It did. I talked to the applicants about the fact that, that building a home and not having a business license, that they could, in rural residential zoning, have the house, have some animals that are non-pets such as goats and chickens, and, and the applicants applied for small agriculture. So, I mean, I respect their right to apply for this zoning district.
Yeah, I just, I was just wondering, since the letter mentioned residential, what made you change it to small agricultural?
Well, the reason I chose small agricultural is that I have property to the backside of my property that's pasture and then kind of there's a cutout that's also pasture to the horse in. And I thought about tying the lower part of my property in, pasturing in for three to five goats, I guess.
Any other questions for Mr. West?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the rezon be approved as requested.
We have a motion. Second. Motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That hearing is closed. Have an open hearing for the third rezon request. Richard, what's your county's opinion?
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. So just for the audience's sake, I'll note that this is not a rezoning request. The property is already zoned agriculture. And so a conditional use application is not saying that the property's gonna shift to commercial zoning or something like that. As proposed, it would stay agriculture zoning. And when there's an individual use proposed on a property, then it goes through the same process as a rezoning for planning commission, then board of commissioners, but, but it is an individualized use specific. And the specific proposed use by Ben Jones is an events facility, including the following: campground services, event hostings, including weddings, workshops, programs, organic farming, overnight farm stays, winery with tastings. This is about 11 acres, but it's, it's slightly deceiving in the sense that this parcel is about 11 acres. But Mr. Jones also owns adjacent properties totaling, you know, possibly up to, you know, 100 acres or more. And so this is, this is off Old Whitestone Road, you know, right at the, the north end of the county, you turn off 515 onto Old Whitestone. And then this property is accessed off a private drive, Cedar Springs Hollow. So Cedar Springs Hollow is, is essentially a, a one lane, narrow gravel drive, and there's some steep slopes and there's some flood plain on this property. Old Whitestone is also a, a pretty steep gravel road. And so my individual concern as a staff member was about public safety and access. And so what I did is I put out an open request from our fire, from our sheriff's department folks, from our land development officer, from, you know, emergency management, asking if they had any concerns, objectives, objections, anything like that, and also asked environmental health related to the septic. And I did not receive any comments from them. So, so based on, you know, not receiving comments, what you see in my staff report may be tempered a little bit by the fact that the items that I did get in terms of feedback was that some of the development related issues could be better served at the development permitting inspections level and not necessarily at the zoning or conditional use level. So some of the items that, in terms of reviewing a conditional use application that I looked at, this time, given that the applicant also owns two adjacent tracts, one of which is approximately eight, 79 acres, screening and buffering for this use may be achieved. The proposed use is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The plan states tourism opportunities exist but are not fully developed. Identify, develop, and promote agritourism, ecotourism, and heritage tourism opportunities. So I do understand that one of the goals of the comp plan is for community leaders to promote agritourism, ecotourism, and heritage tourism opportunities. I still have concerns myself about access and about flood plain and steep slope. I have not received additional comments for backup and justification from other department folks. So at this point, at a minimum, my recommendation would be a condition that all operations cease at or before 10:00 PM be, be appropriate. That is per the applicant's statement and that is consistent with other conditional use applications. Although this, this item stands on its own merit, I'll just note that in the last couple of years, having a cutoff date, a cutoff time of, you know, about 10 o'clock is, you know, may be appropriate.
Is Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
Sure. I'd like to thank you all for taking your time tonight and coming out. I know it's your job and thank you for allowing me to state my case. So I'm sixth generation on this property and my son's seventh generation. We're a little family, organic farm. We've raised vegetables up there since mid-'90s. I started cleaning this property up in the mid-'90s. It was being used as an illegal dump. One of three properties I've cleaned up in the county from being an illegal dump and junkyard, partially caused by my family, but by others as well.
Can't help but...
So we're looking to make a living from our farm. And as a small organic farmer, it's, it's a, it's a hard work, if anybody knows what it's like to, to try and make it as a farmer. I know that some of the concerns that Richard brought up, I'd like to clear up a few things about them. My driveway coming in the Cedar Springs Hollow, it's gravel partway until you get to the steep part, and at that point, we put tar and chip down. There's two layers of tar and chip I put down two years ago, so it's stable and, and it drives great all the way down into the farm now. The, as far as the county road being steep and narrow, it's, it's wider than my drive. It is not that steep in my opinion yet. I think it's a road the county should consider paving. Now that we have the new park on the other side, Bill Jones's southeastern Parklands and Park, I can't remember the whole name you've got, it's southeastern...
Parks and Land.
Parks and Land. But the new bike park over there is bringing some more traffic in, coming off the highway. So, you know, it's probably one of the only dirt roads coming off the highway in the county, I imagine. We've had a lot of issues in the past with trucks coming down that road and getting stuck in front of my driveway usually. But I know that was one of the reasons Kelly, I sold him four acres this past year on top and he's building a house. Kelly Teal is the owner of Biggins Barbecue, is building his new home up there, has concerns about increased traffic and dust on the road, which has always been a concern for me as well. And that road's been used a lot for an illegal dump in the past as well. Now that Kelly's putting his house up there and the park's coming in, the whole area is cleaning up. I think there was a whole lot of illicit things going on from the scenic overview to my road and, you know, it's a...
Are you sure?
I'm there. I've seen more than most of y'all want to know.
I'm sure you have.
So I'm happy that the area is cleaning up, want to be part of that and continue to, you know, be part of that. The other concern about the flood plains in the bottom of my farm, I have a few old cabins that were built in the mid to early 1800s that probably are considered to be in a flood plain, yet they're still there after 160-something years. Past six years I've been there, I've seen three 100-year floods and the buildings have never flooded. I've never had any issues with flooding in any of my buildings. So, you know, I've done a lot to manage the water in the bottoms and the farmland bottoms and, and put them in places where it drains out quick. Let's see, any other issues to address? Septic wise, I put in two new septics last year. We've got three septics on the farm. I got a bath house that serves for people who stay in some of my cabins and when we have guests and people staying with us. So we have a bath house that has two sides, a man and a female and a male side that has the shower and toilet and sink, and they all connect to our septic. And then we have two other septic systems. So I, I feel like we've addressed the issues. Yeah, we would love to be able to, as I showed in my plan, to do this in a phase. So in the first phase, starting small, working with what I got, seeing if we can make a success of what we're talking about doing. And then if we are successful in a couple of years, then expanding into building an event space and a winery. But we're gonna try to get successful for the first couple of years before we get there. So, yeah, this, I think covers everything.
What would phase two be?
I mentioned building in a tasting room for a winery and a commercial kitchen so that we would produce our own wine, have a vineyard on site, and have three or four new cabins to run out as well.
How many cabins do you have now?
I have three cabins and what we call our bath house, which has an apartment above it.
One of my concerns was you're talking about events up to 100 people or less and you've got one road going in and out and people with campfires. I think that a second exit in case that one would be blocked with 100 people, campfires out of control, it'd be a disaster.
I do have a second exit. We just don't currently use it. It comes, it was the old county road. It does cross a neighbor's property and he crosses mine and we have a verbal agreement to be able to use each other's access. So in the case of a larger event, which I don't plan on in the next two years until I get some success in what we're doing, but in that event, I do have another out of the property, another to get out of the property.
There's certainly a whole lot of rain last week. How, you're not in any county road, but from property line in, you had any issues this week?
It's been great. I've had a stopped up pipe at the top of the road where when they were working on your place, they filled my pipe up that goes under my driveway.
The power book.
Power books, yeah. But I've cleaned it out and it's, it's flowing good, so I fixed that problem.
Has there ever been a need to have emergency services to the property? You know, you got any idea what the response sounds like? Have you talked to them at all?
I have talked to them before. I don't know what...
We didn't get feedback necessarily.
Right.
You got some feedback.
Yeah, I haven't heard. They were the ones who wanted me to name my road last year. I invited them down talking about this last year and he said, "Well, why don't you name your road and we'll give each cabin its own number for emergency services." So we've done that since then, for 911, yeah.
What about the campground portion? What type of campground are you talking about?
Primitive camping, like tent camping.
Okay, so no hookups?
No hookups, no.
Okay. How does that relate into, you mentioned the chapter 38 of the Pickens County Code? I didn't have a chance to look that up, I apologize. But how does that relate to that?
Right, so depending on the intensity of the campground, I mean, if it's primitive, then there would not be significant rules and regulations for more traditional, what folks think of a campground like Toluana Creek Campground. There, there are specific 1997 adopted rules... There are specific 1997 adopted rules and regulations about how campgrounds should be designed and laid out. What Mr. Jones is talking about would not fit into that, though.
But you would have water fossils there where people could access water for their cooking and campfires? Would they have to go elsewhere?
There is a creek that runs through currently, and they use that. But, you know, if...
Is there a hose there with the bathhouse?
There is.
That'd be pretty common for a campground, to go with the bathhouse for water. Pretty good camp for me.
Most projects, we have some, we have these kind of... A house that they can access water for cooking and...
Go to Campbell Island.
...fires out and stuff like that.
Huh? Go to Campbell Island. That's pretty good.
I've camped at Campbell Island in the summertime. Do you currently have any... Do you have any fruit vines currently?
One. One must have.
So alcohol...
I have a lot of different fruit trees, and we have a lot of field crops, raised beds, and greenhouses. I've got three greenhouses.
So will you anticipate any alcohol use at any of these events?
No. No. I'm not asking for a permit for alcohol. Non-alcoholic events. So you know the party will be over at 10:00. Everybody be ready to go home by 10:00.
Any other questions, Mr. Jones? You thought about adding goats? Seems to be a compliment.
I've had a few in the past. I think I'm gonna let y'all take the goat business. They do pretty good.
I say the goats do pretty good cleaning up the property.
Yeah, like my...
They can, they can. If they don't get into your crops in the meantime.
How many acres do you have actually in vegetables?
Probably close to two, generally, yeah.
So again, Richard, exactly what are we... What are you asking us to do?
So...
Your recommendations for conditional use?
Right. Right, the folks at Dunn Manor on the west side of the county, now, of course, they have good access directly to 53 West, but they also do have a very long driveway with events. And what their conditional use permit was recommended for approval and then approved with was a condition that all activities cease at or before 10 o'clock. And I would ask that that be put into the motion, if there is a motion made, to recommend approval.
And so that just goes from this point forward? Because we're not approving one event, we're approving a concept based on a conditional use for what's been described as long as it stops at 10:00 PM?
If this proposal gets approved, it runs with the land.
Right.
So if the managers change, property owners change, if the business plan is tweaked, and there are more or less uses, if it's, for example, denied, it's denied. If it's approved, then it's approved. And anything and everything could potentially happen within nuisance laws and things like that. If it's approved with condition, then that applies to everything on the property.
Did you say you were gonna have a winery?
I have considered it in the future, but, like I said, I've gotta get successful before I can afford that. It's something that's doing well as an agritourism product in the area. But I'm not there yet.
That's true. You'll have to have a lot.
Right.
Richard, how would the conditional use fit with events ending at 10:00 if there's overnight accommodations?
So because conference centers, retreat centers, special events, places for weddings and parties, things like that, when the ordinances were put into place over time by the elected officials in many decades past, in the '90s more specifically for land development, and then in the around 2005 for zoning, there wasn't this proliferation of thoughts, ideas, and some demand for special events facilities. Now, in the last five, 10 years, there's been a lot. And so what we have in the ordinances, where there's something that's not black and white spelled out, then the planning development department, the director, fits it into a category. And in this case, I fit it into a category where a conditional use permit would be applicable in the agriculture district. And so if approved, it would cover what's proposed at this time. If in the future, two years from now, they have a different business plan, and they propose a use that they have not proposed, then I would review that proposal and see if it fits under the umbrella of a special events facility.
Well, my biggest thing, I didn't want to go forward and recommend a special use of a visitor at 10:00 if there's some ordinance or code out there that was against opening an event type thing.
Part of what you're talking about, though, you're gonna have classes and things, or people come having a working weekend...
Right, right. Way more farm and educational. Yes, yes, sir. Yes, yeah.
So it's gonna end on a van issue in that case.
Right. It's more of a workshop educational offering. We teach organic farming and ways to live off the grid and create your own power.
You talk to me that. You talk to me about...
I tried this year.
Well, I know. Any other questions, Mr. Jones? Sorry, sir, you didn't sign up and speak.
I'm sorry.
You can't ask in public hearing or public comments, which is item six.
How many campsites do you anticipate?
Ten, max. Ten platforms.
I'm the neighbor that we have a common thing, and I couldn't get in there today when I went to look at my property. It's locked.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. That's not my lock. That's your forester's lock.
Oh, okay.
I know the code, though.
There's not a lock on it that you can manipulate. It is a key lock.
In the past, he put a code lock on it.
He was the pump store.
There's a key lock on it now?
Either that, or I just didn't see.
Okay. Yeah. I haven't been in... I haven't gone through it in a while, so I don't know.
You'd have to have a bulldozer to get through it now.
Well, it's nice to meet you.
Good to see you.
Glad we can bring the community together.
My wife actually said she saw somebody out there today she didn't recognize who it was. So good to know that was you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept and approve the application as submitted with the conditions that Richard has identified, that being that all operations cease at or before 10:00 PM. Second? We have a movement second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please write again. No opposition. That closes this hearing. The next item is a text amendment. I'd like to open up this hearing. Richard, what's the county's recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Kegel.
Your jacket. Sorry, your jacket.
Thank you, thank you.
I've got three hours to drive.
I don't know. Do you want that code?
Oh, I got the code. It's what he put in. I just swore. You know, when you get old, it's a little different. Really.
I'm starting to think I like it.
And I absolutely... Excuse me.
We don't need to discuss that about agents here.
But absolutely, it looked like a key. But I'll check that.
Sometimes they put two locks on them.
Yeah, I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kegel, I appreciate your time. I know this is gonna sound like sidebar because I forgot to mention it at the beginning. But I'm gonna ask that in the minutes, somewhere maybe near the beginning, it be stated that this meeting is being video recorded, and that information can be available. It is part of the record. Thank you. So the text amendment to re-adopt chapter four of the Code of Ordinances, the signs section, is essentially to allow it to be more bulletproof. From time to time, I go to continuing education training in Georgia, and I attend classes by attorneys and other speakers. And there are a few items that consistently is mentioned, that are mentioned, about signs. Number one, local governments should cite and consider cases, sources, and studies in determining findings and purposes. Number two, local governments should not regulate signs based on content. What is content? If I have to look at it and read it, it's content. Now, a sign, I can regulate it based on court cases if it has a curse word or it has nudity. But other than that, if it says, you know, "I love Jesus," if it says "Joe's pressure washing," if it says whatever, I, as a staff person or any other local government staff person, cannot regulate that sign based on content. And the third one, local governments like Pickens County that do not regulate signs by zoning should not mention zoning in sign regulations so that signs are separate, totally separate, from zoning. And so, as proposed, there are no significant changes. This just beeps up the legal language. I've talked to the county attorney about this proposal, and he just asked that one item be deleted. And so if the planning commission chooses to recommend approval, and what you've got in your packet is the memo and then the resolution. And the resolution includes 4-34, which is the general provisions, including maximum height freestanding signs, which is C, and then D is maximum sign areas of freestanding signs. Number one had said, okay, if you're on Highway 515, it's the busiest road, it's the biggest road, you ought to be able to have the biggest sign possible permitted. But also added a statement or sentence that said, "In addition, freestanding signs for multi-tenant developments may have a maximum sign area of 100 square feet on any road." And the county attorney determined that that was not appropriate. Although potentially a good idea as an incentive for businesses, it did not have enough justification legally. And so he asked that that be cut from the record. And so I just asked that if you recommend approval, that you recommend approval with the one sentence deleted.
With which sentence deleted? The 20 feet located on property with road plan?
Right. So the issue came up when a multi-tenant, an existing property with two or three buildings and multiple tenants, they came into our office and said, "Hey, you know, we're not just, you know, blank company LLC. We've got five companies in these couple of buildings. So we'd love to have a big sign so that we can have panels for all our companies." And I said, "You know, I'm sorry right now, under our ordinance, you can't because they were not located on 515. They were on a two-lane road where you can just have a smaller sign." So, you know, maybe a good idea as an incentive, but the county attorney said, "No, you know, let's hold off for now, and then just move forward with everything but that."
Any questions or comments?
I also, if there were grandfathering non-conformant signs, would it be a better idea to actually, if they're not in conformity, to give them a year or so to come into conformity so that we...
I understand the concern, and I've seen that come up in jurisdictions all over Georgia, in talking to folks and training and things like that, and in past experiences. That's tough to enforce. And it's one of those things that, in terms of code enforcement, for better or worse, there are priorities. Unsafe buildings are high priority. Signs, we don't want clutter in the community. But signs are not a life-or-death situation as high priority as, you know, trash accumulation all over a property, sofas, junk cars on a property, unsafe housing. So I do understand your concern. Going after sign violators with grandfathered signs, if we add additional restrictions and rules, I want to be able to, at the end of the day, know that our office, to the best of our ability, will enforce them. And so this one, I don't know that it's a high priority.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment as submitted by Richard and as amended by the county attorney.
One second.
We have a movement second. Any discussion? All of you in favor, please write again. That closes that group. Item five is board comments. Are there any comments? I wish Ms. Plant luck with the goats. I think she's gonna be a good neighbor to you.
I think so. She's been a good neighbor if we hadn't seen one another.
If you have a question about sign ordinance advertising, talk to Richard.
Plant don't fit nothing in size.
And Ms. West is interested in getting a adoption and purchase of a goat, so it's a win-win for everybody. Any public comments?
I've got a quick question. I'm Kelly Teal. Ben sold me some property that's his. We own Biggins Barbecue, as has been mentioned.
Good barbecue, by the way.
Thank you. And I'm a very big proponent of increasing traffic and whatnot because it benefits everybody. And we are aware of the health of it. Although I just... I don't want too big. I'm moved from Atlanta. I'm glad to be here. Ben mentioned the paving of the road, and as it relates to his project, we're building a house really close to the gravel road. And we knew when we did that, it's where the house needed to go, okay? For the views and stuff, it's where we want to be. But I talked to Richard about it as we were making a decision about the property. And at that particular point in time, the bike park thing was in a state of flux. At that time, you were telling me that they wouldn't put up self-fence and that kind of thing, and that you weren't sure it was ever gonna happen because they were trying to bug the system. And now the trails are in there and growing, and we're getting more and more traffic through there. We see the bikes and stuff. But they just opened that park. I mean, there's really no way to know what's gonna happen there over time. I mean, there's really no way to know what's gonna happen there over time. My question is, and I'm not an expert, I've been here a long time, but I'm mostly busy all the time in one spot. The other end of Old Whitestone where it hits at 5 points on, on 05, about almost half of Old Whitestone's paved and I'm assuming, and it's been repaved since I've lived here, I'm assuming it's county money. I, I don't know that, I, 'cause I don't even know when they did it, I don't know who oversees it. I don't know enough to know how these processes go, but at the same time, now that I'm gonna live there, we're spending a lot of money and my wife and I generate lots of tax dollars for the county and we're not trying to be heroes, I mean, it's just the way it is, law. But Ben mentioned, it's kinda unsafe in the curves and stuff if somebody's flying and sometimes they are, I almost gotta get right off the bat, opening the gate, 'cause Ben's gate is closer to road. My point, I guess, is because of the increased traffic, you know, we hadn't seen dry weather yet, isn't, we, we know, but I know that that road gets dusty when we first bought it and I can imagine what's gonna happen, but, but I guess, like I said, my point is, is half the road almost is paved, one driveway turns off pavement, on the entire half mile is paved. There's, my count, two churches, seven dwellings that, that turn off of the, the gravel part of the road that comes from 515. I mean logically, from a simple person's mind, point of view, why would it be paved on the, on the slow end of, of the road versus the, the, the divided highway? And why that money spent down there for one driveway's benefit and, and not for, for ours up there and, and I'm, Ben owns a lot of property, there's a lot of revenue coming in, he's paying a lot of taxes too and, and I, I just, how does a person like me keep the dust storm down and, and, and have the county look at the, the possibility of paving that road as the use is going up? And I realize that this is not county money that put that park in. I'm not, you know, it's not, you know, my point is, is I'm not saying you didn't, but you're aware of it and, and, and you know it's gonna be more traffic and stuff, it's bound to be or what was the point? And I'm just, how would I go about, as a, as a, a person that would be benefited by the, the possibility of paving, how would I go about getting that ball started? I mean, is, is it possible? Did, did that make sense to the county? I know it's not generating revenue, the bike, the bike park's not, but it's still us coming in and out of our driveways and stuff and we're affected by it regardless. And I, like I say, I just didn't, I, I didn't know how else to go about, that's why I'm here. I didn't have any reason on earth to keep Ben from generating revenue. I just wanna try my best to keep my property value up, 'cause we're spending a lot of money, a lot of money.
Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, but probably the first step would be to talk to commission chairman, Rob Jones?
Well, I saw him out there, I started tackling, but I didn't know, I didn't know for us, I didn't know tackling was allowed or not. But, but it's, I mean, I, I, like I said, I just don't know and that's why I'm asking. I'm sure all of you have a, a opinion.
Or get with the head of the road department, but I'm...
I don't even know who that is, that's why I...
Kim Quentin.
Okay.
And part of it may be because the, the access off 515 is actually in Gilmer County.
I know and I don't know how that...
You get that stretch...
Well, our driveway literally starts in Pickens County, but, but in all honesty, they keep, they keep it up, the, well, I say, I don't know who keeps up what, but that section of the dri, of the gravel drive, a road, is the best. It's far better there off the highway than it is in, in Pickens County and, and I don't know why they would. That's, I almost assumed that because it, it was like two tenths of a mile that's in Gilmer County, I almost assumed that it maybe counties work together when, when, in a situation like that, "We'll take care of this and you'll take care of that" type thing. I didn't know, I, I didn't know who was doing it.
So, paved parks in Gilmer County?
No, the, the bike park is in, in Pickens.
Right.
But, but to get to, now, and, and Richard, I, again, I saw the, you showed me the map and it looks like there's gonna be a parking area on our side too, eventually. I don't, I don't know, that was at least on the map you showed me and, and, I don't know if it's changed or not, but, and I hadn't talked to you about it and I just, honestly, I should've done this on, on your time versus everybody's, to be honest, but I just, I knew I was gonna come to, no, anyway, I thought I'd bring it up. But no, it's in Pickens County, but you have to come from Gilmer County off the four lane to get to the park area.
I would recommend, like I said, just getting with, you know, Kim Quentin or Rob Jones and talking to them.
I, like I said, I just didn't, I didn't know how the, the other end got paved and what went into that process and I thought I'd ask, see if it's not something we can get down the road.
If I understand things right, I set up this past year, last year, to redo the streets over there where I live, they have to plan a year in advance, don't they, Richard?
Yes, sir, it, it's a combination and Rodney Buckingham, the land development officer, does a great job working with Kim Quentin on the roads list that's reviewed by the board of commissioners and what they also have to research at staff level is existing legal right-of-way, because if a road, even if it's a county road, has 60 feet of right-of-way versus 30 feet or 40 feet or, you know, not knowing legally what the right-of-way is, it's just kind of, this has been used and it's ditch to ditch, it's obviously gonna be harder to take the steps towards paving than it is if you can find a road that, that 60 feet of right-of-way legally recorded.
But again, the other end is actually at least is narrow, if not narrower, enhanced in pavement, so, and repaved. It was actually the worst paved road I've ever seen in my entire life before they repaved. I mean, really, I'd rather been on a gravel road than that road if I had, if I lived there. But they have, somebody spent money there and I don't have any idea what that kinda stuff costs, but like I say, and, and again, the, there's an unknown, we don't have any idea how much traffic the bike park's gonna generate and that's why I'm here, is knowing that it's just starting and what might it be? And I just wanted it in everybody's ear that it might be something to look at as, as we go forward, regardless of what Ben's doing. I mean, I don't think Ben's gonna do enough to, to compare to that down the road, 'cause that's every day, seven days a week.
Well, to your point, I think there's high hopes that that bike park is gonna generate a lot of...
A lot of people know about it, I'm surprised. I, I've been surprised by people that, like, concrete truck drivers and stuff know about it. Why? I mean, you just wouldn't think, you know, I mean, I can see guys out of Marietta wanting to go, but I, I was surprised at how many locals are, are looking forward to it and have gone off. But, but like I said, I don't know what that means and I don't know how much of that traffic's gonna be on our end, but I see bikes strapped to the back of trucks and stuff going out, that's why, and I, like I say, I wanna take the opportunity, since Ben was here anyway, to, to mention that that's, it, it might help all our values and stuff and it might also attract, you're talking about the agritourism and stuff, well, the bike thing's another thing that y'all are willing to promote and I don't know what paved road accesses and stuff like that, well-marked, might bring a lot more people up here and, and again, there's a part of me that wants the road paved for my house and there's a, a part of me that wants that to do well because of business, so, I mean, everybody wins. Again, we, we create tax, tax dollars every time somebody stops by and you guys get a part of that, so, you know, hopefully, but I'm not trying to get you to spend money for just my benefit, if you spent money for that, it might benefit everybody and I wanted to bring it up with that. Thank you, by the way. And I'll, I do, have, have they changed the map? Can I come see it?
Yeah, absolutely. Anything I have, you're, you're welcome to look at, yeah.
I just, like I say, I just hadn't done it.
Any other public comments? The next item is adjourned. Any discussion? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.